Good evening. Calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council, Tuesday, July 18th. Please rise and Pastor Lee Carlisle from the United Methodist Church will give us our invocation and Councilmember Perscheck will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. I invite you to join me in prayer. Mayor of life, we thank you for summer, for evening light and family get-togethers, barbecues and beach days, relaxed schedules and times of vacation. Yet even in the midst of summer, the work of caring for our city continues and so we gather here tonight. We ask your blessing on this meeting and give thanks for the concern and hard work of all those who have and will contribute to its agenda. We pray for those who protect people and property in our city, our police force and firefighters. We also pray for those who lead our city's government, for Mayor Fuentes, for Mayor Pro Temboiles, and for Councilmembers Brand, Dugan and Perscheck. Give them energy, wisdom and guidance. May we work together for the common good of all who work, play and live in El Segundo. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Perscheck?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Councilmember Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temboiles?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here. Now is the time for public communications related to city business only, five minutes per person, 30 minutes total. Please identify yourself.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dr. John Dorsey. Live at 533 Hillcrest Street. Been a resident here since about 83. My daughter, we've raised a daughter here and now I'm proud to say that she and my son-in-law now live in El Segundo also. So I just wanted you to reconsider the motion to join the Climate Mayor's Network with 357 other cities. By credentials, I'm a professor at Loyola Marymount University. I teach ocean, climate and environmental sciences, lots of committees on different state issues or state committees and policy, mainly water quality. And I've published probably about 37 papers and technical peer-reviewed journals. The other day I was really impressed and proud to read that your environmental committee introduced a motion, I think this is for your July 5th meeting, to join the Climate Mayor's Network. Then I read on to find out that you didn't approve the motion. So I'd like to present a little bit of information to hope that you would reconsider this, but I think it's very important. Mayor Fuentes, you were concerned that this motion was outside of the city's scope services, that sort of thing. And a few of the others who declined to, that I think you guys then voted on the issue, were unsure on how we would exactly go about implementing regulations, that sort of thing. Some of the points I want to make is this. Climate change is here, there's no question about it, and it's affecting us right now, worldwide and also locally and regionally. And I think it's very much in the scope of your city's services, our city. And primarily in, because we're a coastal city, and we're going to see a lot of issues that are going to start to impact us more and more. A couple of examples I can think of right off the get-go are water resources. We know for a fact that water's going to get more expensive and we need to do a lot more on conservation and building new types of water to bring in. So we have to push towards a more sustainable type of things. As we get more heat waves, we got real public health issues, our more vulnerable citizens for heat-related illnesses and also people with different kinds of respiratory problems. As we get probably smoggy or days and also we get more wildfires associated with this, that's more particulates which can certainly impact our citizens, especially those with respiratory problems. There's a host of other things. I'm sure you've all heard about these different things. Your environmental committee, it's a great committee, they've come up with some really good programs and things. They put forth, I thought, was a pretty solid motion. And I think that we need to really listen carefully to them and I would certainly ask you to reconsider this motion that they made. Some of the things that I think they could really do is they could join the Mayor's, the Climate Mayor's thing, because now we can exchange information. It's not about complying with regulations and stuff, but I think it's about exchanging information and ideas. We're all in this together. It's not a local issue, it's a national issue, it's even an international issue, but together we could be much more powerful because we could generate really sound, solid ideas, but we could gain a lot of ideas. And we could do that through this network of cities. And right now, it's up to, I forget exactly where it is, but it's up to nearly 370-some-odd cities are joining it. So that's on the local, regional level, but we could even get involved in the international level. At LMU, we have the Center for Urban Resilience and it's a member of what we call the Mediterranean Climate Change Consortium. And this is a whole variety of group of cities, institutions, academic resource institutions at these different cities around the world where you can exchange information on ways to adapt to climate change and ways to reduce emissions. So we as El Segundo people can really make a contribution by interacting directly, right now we can interact with this entire group at our disposal. So in closing, I want you to really reconsider this motion. We could be very powerful voice out there, don't have to go it alone, but we could join a really broad international network of cities to really make a difference for our citizens. We don't need to go it alone. You know, one of my greatest pleasures in life is I surf almost every day. And I'm out there in Santa Monica Bay with my daughter surfing El Segundo, El Portal Beaches. My wife and my daughter and I, we have dove on coral reefs in Mexico, Hawaii and Australia. Fantastic experiences.
Ms. Up.
And I want you to consider this so that we can continue having these experiences, not only for our grandchildren, but for our descendants. I'll be glad to help in any way I can and I'll leave a copy of my notes with the city clerk with the websites on how to get hold with Mediterranean. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. I am a resident of Virginia Street and my name is Gail Church. In my former capacity as Executive Director of Tree Musketeers, I was a member of Mayor Garcetti's Environmental Network. He from time to time would convene the group as he did on Earth Day 2016. I was seated at the mayor's table for breakfast and he looked me in the eye and he said, "Gail, please tell me why El Segundo is not one of the then 39 cities in my Climate Mayor's Network." I of course had no answer but was horribly embarrassed. So two weeks ago, I came here for a council meeting, all prepared to leave feeling very proud that El Segundo had finally joined the cities that are now all across the country taking a stand on behalf of our planet, our climate. And instead, I was embarrassed again. Thank you Mayor Pro Temboiles and Councilmember Perscheck for voting in favor. Dr. Brand, Mr. Dugan, as abstainers, I believe that you have the right to call the matter back for another vote. I hope that you've been thinking about it and that you have come to realize that El Segundo already has a goal to reduce its carbon footprint and that as a California city, we're already obligated to far more than the provisions of the Paris Accord and that it would be the right thing to do. On a lighter note, Mayor Garcetti also told me he was considering annexing El Segundo so that his favorite restaurant, Good Stuff, could be in Los Angeles. And finally, I'd like to commend you for adopting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. That too was the right thing to do.
Seeing no more public communications, closed council comments? Procedural motion, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Consent agenda, any polls?
Mayor, the staff is pulling item E11 and will bring it back on August 15th.
Okay, thank you. Any other polls? Do I have a motion to approve item 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 and 12?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you.
11 is coming back next meeting?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth of August? Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have no new business, so we'll go down to reports under city clerk, item 13, city clerk? Consideration of possible action regarding introduction of an ordinance consolidating...
Did you skip the city manager?
Pardon?
Did you skip the city manager and the city attorney? City manager, city attorney?
I think they're out of order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes. City manager?
I was fine going last, but a couple of quick things.
I'm really good at doing that, skipping ahead.
Couple of quick things. We, for people watching or here, we are back, we've conducted a number of surveys this year. We really are trying to survey and get people's thoughts more on, particularly on policy issues. We have two surveys that are currently being circulated. One is on the Airbnb short-term rental issue. So if people could go to the elsegundo.org website or to the City of El Segundo Facebook page, they can participate in the survey having to do with short-term rentals. That issue will be coming to planning commission and then to city council this summer. Second survey has to do with the issue that Dr. Brand raised, which is the change, asking people if they want to change from the traditional city logo to the, something that's similar to the Centennial logo. So that was item one. I'm going to ask Ken Berkman, our Director of Public Works, to come up and talk about a couple of public works projects that are going on right now that we're hearing citizen concerns and comments on. And while Ken is on his way up, I did want to note that we have our long-serving Superintendent of Parks, the man who takes care of 60 acres of parks, 6,000 city trees, who's worked for the city for 32 years, starting as a park maintenance worker one, all the way up to the park superintendent. Mark Trujillo is retiring Thursday. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mark for his service. He's always been a great representative for us. He really cares about this city and about its trees. Unfortunately, there are trees that have to be taken down for safety reasons and Mark takes those, has always taken those decisions extremely seriously. Goes out and spends whatever time is necessary to meet with those folks, meet with neighbors, explain the situation. People aren't always happy, but I think they're always happy that Mark has taken the time to come out and speak with them. So there are some events for Mark over the next couple of days, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank him personally.
Thank you. He's been a wonderful public servant.
Madam Mayor, Council and those watching in the public, wanted to present a quick update on our Center Street Water Main Replacement Project, a critical infrastructure project that's ongoing, just started up. And what happened, it appears, is our contractor, in the efforts to be proactive and get out there and in accordance with our specifications, to notify the public adjacent to the construction line, posted a three-week no parking notice, which was incorrect. And staff quickly talked to the contractor and brought into the specifications the fact that we are really looking to have no parking on Center Street. This is between the first phase, Pine and Grand, in the actual work areas. Our specifications also call out noticing this 72 hours in advance to give folks the time to prepare, to not have a parking space during the construction hours, which is 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this work from Pine to Grand will be taking place now through the end of August or so in an effort to make sure we accommodated the school start time and get out of there before school started. And the next phase two, from Grand to El Segundo, would commence after that and be completed somewhere in mid-October. So another consideration for where folks can park adjacent to Center is on Pine and Holly and Bungalow. And our city engineer, Leifan, she was here as well and we're directing staff to have those street sweeping signs covered and those enforcements suspended during construction so folks can have that area to park without having to go back and forth during the hours that is posted for no parking for street sweeping. So ultimately, we've corrected that action and look forward to continued working with the public and appreciate their patience while we do this critical infrastructure improvement. And for contact information, if folks would like to speak to the contractor directly, the superintendent from Newark, his name is Pablo Varamantes and he's at 909-770-2169. And our city project manager, John Gilmore, can be reached at 310-524-2316. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you like.
I had a resident reach out to me and ask if parking on Grand could be acceptable during this time period and I'm not familiar with the constraints on that street, in that location.
Sure. Grand is part of our major arterial network and our circulation element and we really rely on it to be those two lanes, especially in the peak hours period each direction. These types of projects adjacent to residential areas do have impacts on folks and we fully realize that. But it is, we think reasonably accommodated in parking adjacent to the properties there. So it's something that we can consider if they're in as unusual circumstance, let's say, unforeseen conditions that we encounter in the ground that the contractor really needs to shut down the street, that would make sense. But for the minor areas back and forth that they will be working in, there's only really several spaces really that would be taken at a time and we really emphasize to the contractor to focus on the no parking as best they can three days in advance of where they'll be working. But we can consider that in the future if we have some unusual conditions out there.
Thank you. Other questions for Ken?
Go ahead.
I also heard that you started the work on Acacia Park.
Right. The major improvement to our sewer infrastructure is our sewer pump plant stationed 1 and 7. And that is underneath and adjacent to Acacia Park. So that is a major project. And the city engineer and his team are leading that effort and that just started as well. And that will be going on in various stages for about a year.
I'd just like to compliment you on seeing the parking issue with the project here and then going as far as to suspend the restrictions for street sweeping and everything else. Brilliant idea. So whoever did that, good idea.
Okay. Leifan, good job.
Good idea. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And the park is there because of the sewer and the pumps, right? I mean, that's why we...
Well, the infrastructure is underneath that.
That's why there's a park there. If people wonder why we would put a park next to that, it exists because of that, not that we built a park and then we built the facility there. Any other comments, questions? Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Currently, it appears that the top golf item will be in front of council on August 15th. There are some issues that are still being resolved at the golf course subcommittee and some other issues, but it does appear that should be to the council by August 15th. Also, the Plaza El Segundo project, there's amendment to the development agreement and some changes to the C4 zone that are being proposed by the developer. And those are expected to be in front of the planning commission sometime in August. And my office is assisting with those matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I'm really good at skipping ahead. Now it's the city clerk. Consideration of possible action regarding introductions of an ordinance consolidating future standalone municipal elections in the city of statewide, in the city with statewide November, even year elections to comply with the California Voter Participation Rights Act, California State Senate Bill 415, fiscal impact estimated savings $20,000. City clerk?
All right. So Mona and I have prepared a presentation for you this evening. Let me get it on. All right, we're ready to go. So we'll start with a brief background on SB 415 for you all. On September 1st, 2015, California state legislature passed the California Voter Participation Rights Act, also known as SB 415. The new legislation prohibits a local government from holding an election on any date other than a statewide election date if doing so in the past resulted in a significant decrease in voter turnout. The new law goes into effect January 1st, 2018. SB 415 requires cities with insufficient voter turnout to either change their election dates to June or November of even years. Or prior to January 1, 2018, we can adopt a plan to consolidate your, the elections with the statewide election no later than November 8th, 2022 general election. As you can see, this slide kind of speaks for itself. The slide shows you that the average of the four past statewide elections, our voter turnout was 66.55%, or the statewide elections was 66.55%. In order to meet SB 415's requirement not to consolidate with the county, El Segundo needed a 49.92% voter turnout. But as you can see, in 2016, our turnout was 33.49%. So therefore, the staff is going to recommend the following option. We recommend the city council consolidate with the Los Angeles County statewide election in November of 2018 and for the following reasons. We believe we'll have an increase in voter participation. You will also see an immediate cost savings, consistency for the voter experience. The City of El Segundo municipal election and the El Segundo Unified School Board election would be in the same voting cycle starting November 2018. And the city clerk staff would be able to focus on voter education and voter participation. One of our key reasons for moving to the November 2018 is that we feel we need to start building a relationship with the Los Angeles County Registered Recorders Office because in two years, 2020, they're anticipating a rollout of the new Los Angeles County voting system. So we feel like at least if we move to the county in 2018, then our voters, our residents will be used to this new process. And then when we do move into 2020 and they have their new voting system, then we will be a little bit more familiar and I think it would ease our residences. Next? Yep. So, but you do have other options. So option number one is to continue to conduct standalone elections in April of 2018 and 2020. And option number two is rather than consolidate with a November statewide general election, we can choose to consolidate with the June statewide election. In evaluating the June statewide election date, staff determined the following. The June statewide election date would be a bit more costly. And Mona and I attended a clerks summit where there's two pending pieces of legislation that could possibly move, this gets confusing. You would, every other year you would hold an election in June and then on the, on those next two years, you would hold an election in March, which we felt would be a bit confusing for residents as well as confusing for council terms. All right. So at this time, if you guys have questions, we'd like to answer them for you, but we also have a short video on the new system that Los Angeles County will be using in You want the video first?
To meet the evolving needs of our nearly 5 million voters, Los Angeles County is challenging traditional ideas about voting systems. The days of inking your ballot are rapidly coming to an end. In the next few years, innovations and new technology will revolutionize the way you vote. Let's take a look at some of the changes you'll see. You know how voting includes paper sample ballots for your review? Get ready for a sample ballot that is interactive and accessible, providing a flexible and trustworthy voting method. This interactive ballot will let you mark it, generate a QR code for scanning and uploading and review your selections at a vote center on a modern sleek touchscreen with customizable viewing options for your preferred language, text size and contrast. Voting will be simple, efficient and cost-effective. Using input from the voting public and engaging expert designers, Los Angeles County's voting system has been reimagined to use a high-tech ballot marking device that still produces a paper ballot for accountability and accuracy. The best part? Voters will be able to vote anywhere in the county as early as 10 days prior to the election. Are you excited yet? By pioneering a voter-centered approach to design, Los Angeles County's new voting system will maximize technology to make it easier to cast your vote and enrich your voting experience for today and tomorrow.
So both, both Mona and I are here to answer your questions, concerns?
So we went, obviously if we go to the November recommendation per your office, there would be an extended term for this council and the future one?
2020. Okay. So of approximately seven months.
I, you have, Dr. Brand?
And the law requires a decision to be made by this November if a public agency wants to defer this from beginning until 2022.
Yes.
You need to commit.
That is correct.
Okay.
So I have concerns. First of all, everybody probably knows I'm opposed to this. I don't think the state has any business telling cities when they hold their elections. It's the overreaching arm of the law. Thank you California State Legislature, again. But I, but my biggest concern now is our budget. We have a different budget year that begins October 1st and we have a long process of strategic planning that we just began a week or so ago. Goes on for several months during the summer. It's very thoughtful. Goes on in July and August and then we approve our budget basically at the end of September, October 1st. If we hold an election in November, then the newly seated council does not get to vote on strategic planning. What are their priorities? And they're working to the former council's priorities. I would like to see going with the April election this time and then changing our budget year. If we go with the, we could do a June election, but then the council would be seated the first week in July because it has to be certified by the county. It takes a couple of weeks now instead of when we do our own elections and it's certified at the next meeting.
30 days.
So that council will jump in, if it's a June election, it'll jump in... So that council will jump in, if it's a June election, it'll jump in into strategic planning, but at least they have a say in the budget and the priorities for the city, which I think is very important. So I favor April, at least this time, and then transitioning to a later election date and then changing the budget cycle if necessary.
I favor April both in 2018 and in 2020. There's a possibility all this is going to change in the years ahead. Sacramento's famous for doing that. Also, by stalling this implementation, each of us up here can serve out the terms that we thought we were elected to do and nothing more. And if we want more, we can run again. That would allow that, and it would visit on future council who could know the rules going in, how long their terms would be.
Our only concern with that is the vendor, that is our vendor. He, they are a sole source, and they may be out of business by 2020.
They'd still be able to accommodate April of 2018?
As far as...
As far as you know?
As far as we know, that they have until 2018. But past that, they may be out of business.
Yeah, I like the mayor's proposal. I think it's a nice compromise. What I really like about what I read, whether or not it comes to fruition, is, I mean, the way, the way in which they're going to reach voters is really innovative, allowing people multiple days, multiple areas in LA County to vote electronically. I think hopefully we'll get more people to show up, so I'm certainly in favor of moving in that direction. I have similar concerns, Dr. Brand, about whether this will stick, but I, but I like the mayor's suggestion.
And then, how difficult would it be for us to change our budget cycle?
A question for our Director of Finance, Joe Lilio.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. So when you are stating changing the budget cycle, are you referring going to a July 1st through June 30 budget cycle?
What is the standard budget cycle for cities? Fiscal year?
Fiscal year, July 1st through June 30. There's a handful of cities that have the federal fiscal year, such as El Segundo. I just heard today that Long Beach changed their budget cycle to match what most cities have July 1st through June 30. What does that entail? I believe there would probably at least be a year or two of planning to prepare for that. It's not something you can just implement within a few months.
Correct. So if we looked at a 2020 date or beyond, then you would have several years...
Correct.
...to do that.
Why are we on the federal cycle again?
You know, I, I do not have an answer for that, but I can look into that and get back to you.
Most cities are on the same cycle as the public school districts. They're all on July to June.
Right, it's also the same cycle as the state.
Mm-hmm.
I have heard we're on that budget cycle because of our April elections, but that's anecdotal, I've been told.
Yeah, kind of which came first. And I think your point's well made, Mayor, that this impacts more than the election. It impacts the budget also. So if we get some more information on that, it might guide us to plan a smooth implementation process. It might be another reason to keep things as they are in 2018 and 2020 and just go into this when we, under current rules, have to. I don't really want to vote for something that lengthens my term. I signed on for four years, not four years and a month. So I've seen that happen in other places, but there's a way we can avoid it affecting us individually up here. We should take it.
I just looked, you know, the, the city clerk's office put together a recommendation to save the city some money and in line with the, the state. I think that was the recommendation that you had out there. So whatever reasons you have for doing that, you're the experts in it, and, and I'm, you know, I also am okay with doing it on the current schedule until things get a little more clearer, but at least we had to acknowledge that the city clerk's office is looking at being a good steward for the city and trying to streamline things and, and save the city some money here. So I can support that, too. So it doesn't make any difference. I'm impartial to it. But I, I do recognize that, thank the clerk for doing that.
Thank you.
So do we honestly, I mean, so you've indicated earlier that you're not sure if the vendor we use will be around for 2020, but that you're, you're pretty confident that they'll be around for 2018. You're fairly confident.
Fairly confident.
So if we moved to what Mayor had suggested of adopting it in 2018, then that would help, and then at the same time, we make a concerted effort to look at our budgeting cycle. So if, say, 2019 will have flipped, could, could we see what that would look like? Would that be doable to change our budgeting cycle for 2019?
What, what I would recommend is one year adopting maybe a 21-month budget. So a lot of cities adopt a two-year budget plan. So maybe adopting a 21-year...
In 20...
21-month budget.
In 2018? So if, if we...
If, if that was the direction of council, and then we would be aligned up for the 2020 elections, we would have a July 1st through June 30 fiscal year.
I'm not so worried about the budget cycle with the voting cycle here, because either way you have, you know, today's cycle, you have six months of the budget without any input to it. Whether that goes to a year, I don't think it's really significant, to be honest with you.
Actually, by the time you get seated, it's May. So you have May, June, and then strategic planning kicks in in July, so you have two months to, I mean, obviously, you form some opinions through campaigning, but yeah, I agree. I think it could be improved substantially with November...
Yeah.
And budgets in July, we'd have more time, new members would have more time to get up to speed.
So will there be a motion?
I move that we go with April and 20...
We need to bring it back.
Oh, no, it's an ordinance.
Bring it back, okay.
So, Clerk, Madam Clerk, when you bring it back, can you just give us option 1, 2, 3, and 4, one of the options being moving forward in 2018?
Yes.
And then 2020, I heard Dr. Brand say also.
Thank you, Mona and Tracy for doing this.
I'm sorry, can I, can I clarify? You want us to bring back the option of where we will hold a standalone in 2018 and consolidate to November in 2020, correct?
Okay.
And that's not mine. Mine is leave everything the way it is in 18 and in 20, and go with this in 22 if it's still around as, as what Sacramento thinks is best for us.
Okay, so you want us to bring, so we're going to bring back two, two options, and it's 2018, 2020, and then stay 2018, stay 2020, and not consolidate until 2022.
Right, because that's the only option that lets us serve the terms we were elected to.
All right.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, City Clerk?
That's it, thank you very much.
Our City Treasurer is not here this evening. Councilmember Brand.
Couple things. The Chamber of Commerce had their mixer in the park for Hawthorne, Manhattan Beach and El Segundo. It's in Chevron Park last week, and it was really a nice evening for it. Saw a lot of people there. Also, went to this ribbon cutting and press conference on Mariposa that was just very fascinating for the new Chan Sun Shion Institute. I was so impressed with the mayor's remarks that she was able to get those names right 14 or 15 times during her remarks. That was really special.
Thank you. I lived in Taiwan, so thank you.
Yeah, okay, that helps, I'm sure, then. That's cheating. But it was really great meeting Dr. Pat and hearing what his plans are to eradicate something that's hurt most American families and affected all our friends. What an amazing thing if he's able to pull off what he's planning in the next few years right here in our city. I was just very excited by that possibility and his track record so far. So that was, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Perstek?
Yes, and I want to give a thank you to all the members of the staff that attended the strategic planning meeting. It was very well, well done, and I look forward to us continuing to provide vision for the city. I know the staff is doing a great job of implementing it. I see really good things happening for our City of El Segundo with the, with the staff we have. So thank you to everyone, all the members that participated. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
I'm going to pass.
Mayor Protem Boils?
Thank you. First of all, you know, I've been listening to folks out there about the accessory dwelling unit, and what I would just ask staff to do is, and I think this is probably something you already have planned, but to, in six months, I would like staff to come back to City Council and address how many have been built, how many are in plan check or some phase of design, what the typical design or layout in square footage looks like, how that relates to the floor area ratio constraints that are in place, and any positive and negative feedback. So I think in six months, it'd be good to go back and revisit that. So I would ask, Greg, is that reasonable to request? Thank you. Second one is, we talked a little bit about this, I believe, last time, but I would ask that on the next agenda, we put a matter on there to, basically for anything that comes before the council, that there's an environmental consideration. And it could be something, I'm sure other cities have this in place, that we could look to some of their examples, Greg, but just so that we consider it, and we might not always choose the most environmentally or least impact option, but to know that we've at least considered it. Third thing is with the new chief, Wayland, really excited to have you on board. I think what I would like is that we revisit Clutter Buff, Bluff, how are we doing? I've heard from adjacent neighbors again that there, there are issues there again, and so I'm sure Chief Wayland's already been debriefed on the situation there, but I would like to revisit it. How's it going? And maybe it's an opportunity to get the new chief to engage with the local community there, to hear from them if he hasn't already. So those are my three asks, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, to what Councilmember Perstek said about strategic planning, I thought it was a very productive afternoon that we spent with our facilitator, and thank you to all the department heads who, who attended and contributed because it takes everybody to come up with the vision for our city. Dr. Brand mentioned the, the mixer at Chevron Park, which was so nice. Thank you, Chamber, and thank you Chevron for your generosity. You also heard about the Chan Sun Shion Institute for Medicine. How generous of that family, you know, to, to donate the property and to buy the buildings and to look for a cure for cancer. We talked about this at our State of the City a few months ago, but cure for cancer is going to happen in El Segundo, and we'll all be very proud that we were here. I was honored to represent the city at a banquet for Mayor Cheng, who is the mayor of Taiwan, Taiwan. That was an honor. And I attended two meetings for Vista Del Mar with staff, and then the one last week with the Mayor Protem. We were invited to a special meeting with Supervisor Janice Hahn, who really is our own, only elected who has jurisdiction in that, that district, and I thought that also was very productive. It was a very small group, and everybody was candid and she is very helpful. She's advocating for us, and before our meeting, she actually lives in San Pedro, and she drove down here to go that whole route and see what the impacts were, so she could speak to us about that. So I appreciate that. And the last thing I have is on August 27th, we are having our Centennial Carnival at Chevron Park. It's going to be a wonderful day to celebrate El Segundo. We want to get that information out there as soon as possible. I think there might be flyers out already. If they're not, they will be soon, but Meredith's staff has been working on that for months and the Centennial Committee, which is a group of, of residents in town who've been, been working all year to provide a really festive year to celebrate this wonderful city we, we call Town. So tell your friends, August 27th, Chevron Park. And they can buy tickets at the checkout at Rec Park? Is that? So do that before, before they sell out. And also, we had our first disaster council meeting this morning with our new chief, our new emergency manager coordinator and Chief Donovan, and I thought it was a really good meeting as well. Lots of good things happening, and we're going to be working on preparedness for our city, the residents, the, the schools, the businesses. I'm, I'm very happy we have that going. So with that, we go back to public communications.
Evening to you all. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking to you. My name is Jack Axelrod. I reside at 317 Richmond Street, Apartment B. I've been a resident for about, not for about, I've been a resident for over 18 years. First, I'd like to apologize for not contributing more to the city. I, I don't really do very much at all. I spent my entire life avoiding responsibility. Continue. That design up there, I've been looking at it for weeks. It really resembles, if you think about it, no, you don't have to think about it. There was a movie called Robocop 2, and what, what?
That struck a nerve.
It does. It looks, it looks like Robocop, and he's holding, he's holding some kind of pistol or something, I don't know. So that really ought to be changed, and I, I suggest that you do it by, by competition. Very disappointing to hear. I didn't realize that El Segundo did not support voting. I, I didn't realize that we had such a poor turnout for voting. I go, I vote each time. Also, I really like paper ballots. I don't have a smartphone. I do not have an, I do not have email, so I like to go up there. It's just personal, personal liking to go up and hand, 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 make my, make my vote with my hand on a piece of paper. I like that. That's a personal, a personal like. I think you're all very nice. You're really nice people. I don't know how wise you are. I changed the letters in there. But you're nice, but maybe not wise. I don't know how erudite you are. I don't know if any of you have ever read the Marx and Engels Communist Manifesto. I would hope that you had. I don't know if you've ever read Eric Fromm's Escape from Freedom. This is, this is a book that was written by a psychologist in late, in the late 30s in Germany, and could not understand how it is that a nation that's so much prized art and music could turn to fascism, but it's possible. It's even possible in this country. Yes, you're nice. Are you, are you wise? Are you visionary? I don't, I don't have that sense of you're being really visionary, but that's okay. We are what we are. Oh, there was another book I would like to recommend to you if you've never read it. That's David Reisman's The Lonely Crowd. Yes, climate change is possibly the most dangerous threat facing us all, facing us all as members of the human, as members of the human race. Reisman was talking about population, and I never hear any of you talking about population. And it's not just the sheer number of people, the nine, eight or nine billion people on the planet, it's the density. And density in Los Angeles gets worse and worse and worse and worse, and I'm looking to the time when I get out of here. Perhaps that concludes my comments for this evening. But again, I thank you all very much for your close attention to the fiscal health of the, of the City of El Segundo. It's a, it's a pleasure being here. Be well.
See, no more public communications, we'll close. Any comments? Okay, we are going to go back to closed session, 7:51.